Welcome to all the viewers who get a chance to watch this recorded virtual town hall. My apologies that due to technical difficulties, we weren't able to air this live. I'd like to say thank you to all MAPS families for your support and patience as we navigate education in the COVID era. We've been hard at work formulating plans, developing new protocols and procedures, and building new models to deliver instruction and learning to our students. All the while, we've been listening to parents and working to incorporate their wants and needs into district plans wherever possible. This balancing act has been a tightrope to walk. As most of you are aware, we've tried to develop plans offering the most flexibility to meet student and family needs. This currently includes five days a week of face-to-face learning. I do want to emphasize, this is happening under Phase 5 of the state's reopening plan. If we are moved to Phase 4 of the state's reopening plan, we will readdress whether or not we're able to offer five days of face-to-face instruction. We're also offering 100% online instruction. Unlike this past spring, this will be for credit and grade advancement. Lastly, a hybrid option. A model where some learning can be done face-to-face and some learning can be done online. As we go through today's FAQs, we'll work to explain this option in greater detail. I think it's important to note that one of the chief guiding philosophies in the health and safety of students and staff. We recognize for some, these restrictions may have gone too far, and for others, likely not far enough. For those students electing face-to-face education, the following list of safety measures is to be expected when back in school. We are requiring masks to be worn in grades K-12 on the bus, in classrooms, and in common areas. Hygiene protocols for frequent hand washing. Social distancing in hallways, lunchrooms, and on the playgrounds. We are making efforts to social distance when possible in classrooms. I do want to emphasize again, while in Phase 5, we may not achieve the full six feet in classrooms. If moved to Phase 4, we'll revisit this issue as well. We are recommending parents self-transport if at all possible, allowing greater social distancing on buses. Those that ride buses will have assigned seats. Family members will sit together, and we'll group students by neighborhood. Parents, please keep students home whenever they're sick. Parents, please conduct a wellness assessment of their child before sending them to school, including a temperature check. And students have a clean mask each day. Lastly, before we get started with our FAQs, I want to thank our back-to-school committee for their guidance in developing our health and safety procedures. Our Board of Education for their leadership and support. Our dedicated teachers and staff for all their efforts to ready MAPS for the upcoming school year. And our panel who've joined me today to bring further clarity to questions you need answered. Let's get started with the questions. First question I'd like to address for folks that are tuning in. The question was, "All students in-person at Marquette Senior High School will be wearing masks, correct? I see a spot on the in-person form to request an exemption from wearing a mask. However, isn't the online option available for those who cannot wear a mask?" I'll say this a little bit more broadly, other than just Marquette Senior High School, but across all the buildings in our district. Yes, we are requiring masks to be worn by all K-12 students. There is an exemption for medical reasons. As a district, legally, we are not able to deny those kids face-to-face education if they have that signed medical exemption. I'll further clarify though, students that refuse to wear a mask, that don't have a medical exemption, we will be looking to move those students to one of the online options open. Next question. If we choose to send our kids to in-person school and they get sick, coronavirus or other, are they sent home for quarantine? How will they keep up with their schoolwork? Will they be given the option to enroll in the online schooling while they are home for a few weeks? If a student does get sick at school, coronavirus or other, and they are sent home for quarantine, yes, they will be able to move to one of the online options. We ask that before the student comes back, they have a doctor's note, or they quarantine for a minimum of 10 days. And that's in our state health department guidelines. We have a link to that posted on the MAPS website. Are masks going to be provided for our children? And if so, are they approved COVID masks? Yes, we will be providing masks for students. Looking right now at two masks per marking period. I do want to make a note right now to thank the United Way for their generous donation. Over 3,500 donated masks. And we also have masks for Marquette that are going to drop off masks for us next week. So we appreciate those efforts. Outside of that, if a student forgets a mask, doesn't have a mask with them, we will have one-day disposable mask for our students to use. How will it be handled if someone in the class gets the virus? Will classes be stopped? I will say, this is one of the most difficult questions that we've had to wrestle around. We've consulted local doctors, we've consulted with the Marquette County Health Department. In all cases, there isn't an exact blueprint to answer this question because every case is unique and different. I'll throw out a scenario. If we have a student that showed up Monday morning, was in school for a half hour, that student was sent to the office, they go home, still feeling ill, the parents take them in, they get a COVID test several days later, that class meanwhile probably has continued. And if no other student in that class were to show symptoms, it doesn't make sense that we would then come back two or three days later after a positive test and say, maybe we're not going to have that class, or we're going to close that class. I think we would operate more from the approach of if there has been transmission of the virus within the school building, to then close down that class, close down that building. That's one of our biggest fears, and we'll continue to work to identify this in a way that our parents and our community understand. But at this point, we do not have a set protocol of when we would cancel a class or a school What about busing and transportation for kids that are going to be attending in-person? What are your busing plans for social distancing? How will the driver be able to drive safely and enforce those rules? Would you prefer parents who are able to drive their kids do so? And as I said in my opening remarks, yes, we would prefer that parents self-transport if at all possible. For those that are completely unable to, we will continue to bus. You must wear a mask the entire time on the bus. Every student before they get on the bus will be given hand sanitizer. Students will be seated according to a seating chart. We will put family members together. We will try to social distance as best we can under Phase 5. We will revisit that in Phase 4. And we will group students by neighborhood. As a parent that may use the before/after-school programs, is this going to be available this year? Yes, right now, the before and after-school program providers are planning to continue to do so to begin this school year. Is there any news about class size? Again, in Phase 5, we are going to try to social distance, but we haven't put a cap on class size at this point. We will have more information on class size once parents have made their selection, whether they're going to be in-person for face-to-face, online, or hybrid. And we will do our best to social distance, but we are not promising exact social distancing in classrooms. We will try to make that happen in hallways, cafeterias, and lunchrooms, also on the playground. And that's all the information we have right now on class size. Our building principals will have more of that information, again, after these selections. We are now going to switch. I'm going to invite Mr. Young up, and I'll prompt him with a few questions, and we'll continue. So thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Mr. Young, will the Marquette Senior High School Online Academy information be available prior to decision-making on August 19?
Yes. Last week, we sent out an email to all students, all families, parents, and guardians that outlined what the online program would look like. The document that was sent out also includes information about the face-to-face, online, and hybrid, so that the parents can compare those three options and decide what works best for their family and for their student. That information went out last week. We will send out a reminder email scheduled to go out first thing tomorrow morning that will include that information again. And in addition, we will add a document that also highlights the top 10 things that families should know, should they choose to go face-to-face at Marquette Senior High School.
Next question. Thank you, John. I assume you will extend the decision deadline until the Online Academy information is available. Unfortunately, the continued inability to access even the course listing does not bode well for the functionality of the Online Academy. The school district cannot expect parents to make a decision when there's no course list or further detail available for review. So could you explain that course list a little bit for us?
Yeah, two things that are important to remember about the course list. First of all, the document that we sent out previously does have a list of the courses that are available through the Michigan Virtual Partnership that we've developed. And it also includes information about how those courses will align with the Marquette Senior High School courses. And so, an important thing for parents to recognize and students to understand is that all of the courses that have been offered for Marquette Senior High School for the upcoming school year will be offered in an online format as well. There may be an exception to a class such as woodworking or something along those lines. We're still working out some logistics to determine those things. But in essence, every class that your child would have requested will be a class that's available online. Those classes are available face-to-face, online, or in the hybrid format.
So maybe to be clear, the courses that we're going to be offering are not all offered by Michigan Virtual, but in the context that they're not, our teachers would be coming up with that online curriculum for those other classes?
Yes. Marquette Senior High School has partnered with Michigan Virtual to offer 99 different courses online. As a high school, though, we actually offer more than 99 courses. And so as a result, those courses that are not offered through the Michigan Virtual curriculum will be courses that our teachers here locally are developing, implementing, and bringing out for our students, so that we have access to the full offering that Marquette Senior High School typically provides.
And again, the follow-up question to this, are there AP English courses in the Online Academy? Maybe you want to talk about just AP courses in general, those that are either part of Michigan Virtual or those that we teach that may not be in the Michigan Virtual portfolio?
Yeah, so like we were talking about before with the course offerings, regardless of whether or not it was on that initial list offered by Michigan Virtual, it will be available. And so, for example, right now, AP Language and AP Literature are two courses that are not listed on the Michigan Virtual list. However, because those are courses that we offer here at Marquette Senior High School, our teachers will be developing and implementing that curriculum so that they are available online for students. That would be true of all of our courses, AP, traditional, elective, required courses, regardless of being available. And our AP, each of those classes will follow the normal AP guidelines, just as it would if they were here face-to-face. There is a requirement that all AP courses are taught in a way that complies with the College Board requirements. And so therefore, it would be the same experience, although slightly different in some form or fashion, between the face-to-face versus the online.
Are all Online Academy courses asynchronous? And before you answer that, maybe we want to explain to parents the difference between synchronous and asynchronous. And then the follow-up to that was, it appears there will be no chance for online students to take part in classroom discussions with the teachers and other students. So maybe you can address that as well.
So first, the idea of asynchronous versus synchronous. Asynchronous is a class that is done independent of the teacher being present. So for example, an online class that is asynchronous would be a class where I can work at my own pace, I can work from home, I do not need to be connected to a teacher. Each of the Michigan Virtual courses are set up in an asynchronous fashion and can be run asynchronously. A synchronous course, on the other hand, is a course where I am working with the teacher directly, I'm collaborating perhaps with students, and we have that level of interaction that takes place where everything is happening at the same time. So I'm not available in that case to be able to work at 9 o'clock at night. Instead, I need to work at the same time as the other classmates, the teacher, and the rest of the classes working. In our particular case, we will offer everything in an asynchronous format. However, there is the potential and the opportunity that there could be some portions that we do have some synchronous activities built in with. That being said, we cannot require those. And the reason we cannot require those is because students with multiple children, for example, may have bandwidth issues, there might be issues to connect with a device, there might be the fact that both students need to be able to get on the internet at the same time. Those kind of issues that might exist could be problematic. There could also be some issues between this teacher's schedule and some other things. And so as a result, our plan is to focus on asynchronous learning. And at times, in select courses where we're available, we'll offer some synchronous activities.
Will students be getting time, say, every class period, to get outside, no matter the weather, to take off masks and get fresh air?
Yes, we are strongly encouraging the use of outdoor education. And so for example, here at the high school, our PE classes have made the determination that as long as the temperature is 50 degrees or higher, and it's not raining outside, PE class will be taught outside. The rest of our teachers have been strongly encouraged to utilize outdoor education as much as possible. And we also are looking at ways to actually set up outdoor classroom spaces. This would include desks, chairs, things along those lines that are set up around our campus, so that teachers have the ability to take their class outside, weather permitting, and be able to space out, social distance, perhaps an opportunity to take off the mask and be able to enjoy the outdoors while at the same time being able to safely educate the students.
What grades can do online learning?
Online is open for grades 9 through 12 with the Michigan Virtual Partnership that we have developed. Now, we'll talk about, the other principals are going to talk about their building separate and how they've got availability for online learning for them as well. But in terms of Michigan Virtual, that is a 9 through 12 program, so all students, freshmen, sophomore, junior, and senior would be eligible for that program.
Can the classes be done at any time during the day?
Yes. Given the fact that they are asynchronous in nature, a student who is able to, they could work around a job, they could work around family activities, they could choose to work on school first thing in the morning, they could choose to break that into two different sections in the day and work in the evening and the morning, whatever works best for their schedule, they will be able to work at. Also, there's flexibility for them to work at a pace that's fitting as well. Clearly, they need to keep pace on the actual course in terms of making sure that they're making progress, that they'll be completed by the end of the marking period. However, for some students, they may find that they could actually work a little bit quicker and be able to move more efficiently through some of those lessons.
Will there be any meetings for parents before school starts?
Yes, we held a meeting last night, as a matter of fact, a Zoom meeting for parents. That video has been posted to our Marquette Senior High School Facebook page and is available. And likewise, I am more than ready and available to answer any questions you may have, so feel free to call or email, and we'll get some information out to you quickly about those things.
Can students participate in extracurricular activities like French club if online? If a student chooses online, can they participate in specials, orchestra, band, et cetera?
Really, two parts to this question. The first part is that it does not matter if you choose to be a face-to-face student, an online student, or a hybrid student. You have access and availability to all clubs, all athletics, any programming that MAPS offers. And so, for example, if you chose to take your courses online but wanted to participate in athletics, you would be able to do that. If you choose to do your online learning from home, but you want to participate in the French club, as Mr. Saunders pointed out, that's there, it's available for you. And so regardless of which format you choose as a family, all of that functionality and all that programming is available for you as a student.
Would students go through their guidance counselor to set up classes?
Yeah, so right now, what we're going to do is we have families going online to choose which program they choose to enroll their student in. At that point in time, there is no need for you to do anything else as a family. We actually began the scheduling process in February, and at that point in time, your student shows what classes they were going to attend, what classes they wanted to take. Our guidance counselors have already gone through the process of ensuring that those classes meet the Michigan Maryland curriculum requirements. And as a result, that schedule is already built. So what will happen is when a family chooses to go online, we will take that student, move them to the online version of that course, and they're set. There may be some exceptions and some issues that might come up with scheduling, and as a result, if that were to happen, we would reach out to the family to determine what's the alternative course we're going to place the student in. In the situation of a student that, or a family that chooses a hybrid option, the way that we'll approach that is, once we have that recognition that you're going to enroll in a hybrid program, our guidance counselor will reach out to the family, determine what courses are best for the student to have face-to-face, what classes are best for the student to have online, and put together a schedule that works best for the student and the family.
Could you describe how the lunch program will work this year?
Yes. So traditionally, we have two lunches. One would be a freshman lunch, and the other lunch would be an upperclassman lunch. As of right now, we have two lunches scheduled for the upcoming year. However, we've added additional locations for lunches. And so usually, we would have used our cafeteria as a location. This year, we will be using the cafeteria, the gym, the common space outside the cafeteria, both the sports decks and the library. By using the additional space, it allows for us to separate students and accomplish greater social distancing. That being said, once we've seen the numbers come in in terms of how many families are choosing to be face-to-face versus how many families are choosing to be online, we'll then be able to determine what will the lunch hour numbers really look like. And at that point in time, if we find that the numbers are too high, we will look at adding additional lunches. Right now, we've got a plan in place to be able to offer four lunches, or a plan in place to perhaps even move that to six lunches if needed to keep the numbers down.
I know you've talked about this a little bit, but what will the hybrid option look like? I think that's one of the biggest questions we get from parents is, what is this hybrid option really going to look like for some families?
So there's two things to think about when we think about hybrid. First would be the scenario where perhaps as a student, you decide, you know what, as a student, I struggle in math, I want to make sure that I'm face-to-face for math because I'm going to get the best instruction that way, I'm going to be able to ask questions and get immediate feedback that way, and so I want to make sure that I take math face-to-face. But, I really enjoy art, I don't necessarily need to have the additional supports in there, I could do that online. And so a family might choose to have selected classes, maybe it's their core classes, as classes that they would do online, and then other classes, perhaps elective classes, that they would do through the, excuse me, I said that backwards. Face-to-face, their core classes, and then online for their other elective classes. Vice versa, that works as well. It could be that a family might decide, you know what, I don't want to use the school transportation, I want to avoid that. And so as a result, I'm actually going to do a hybrid and take the first hour off because I can then drive my student to school, get them to school for second hour, and they could do face-to-face for the remainder of that day. That would be another example of a hybrid option. A third example would be if a family had a unique situation where perhaps the student wasn't able to attend on a daily basis, and instead, they decided, Monday, Tuesday, I'm going to be here face-to-face, Thursday, Friday, I'm going to be home taking it online. And so by having that flexibility, we would be able to put together a schedule that would work in that case as well. Ideally, a student would choose to do a class fully online or a class fully face-to-face, simply because that provides the best educational opportunity for them, but the other option is available.
Will students who choose online school get physical books for studying subjects, or is it purely electronic?
It will actually be a combination of both. The reason for that is there are select Michigan Virtual courses that do require a textbook. And in those cases, we would have a textbook that would be available for that student. The other option is that our teachers have the full functionality and ability to manipulate the curriculum through Michigan Virtual, so that it also includes locally-developed curriculum from our teachers. And as a result, they may choose to have our local book that we use for our face-to-face class as part of that online student's learning materials as well. And so we could see the combination of both book and no book for online learners.
Can you explain how kids will enter the building at the day's beginning this year? Normally, they congregate in certain areas. What's being done to social distance with kids coming into school at the same time?
So the first thing that we're doing is we're encouraging families to drop their students off between the time of 7:15 and 7:25 in the morning. By dropping off at that time, that means that the classroom is already open and is already available for the students. And so students would be able to come in, drop off their belongings at their locker, grab their backpack, and bring their backpack to class, and then go to class right then at that point in time. And at that point in time, they're then confined in that classroom with whatever peers they would normally have within their class. And so they would not be in a situation where they're congregating in the halls or hanging out in a lunchroom or something along those lines. That being said, we understand that there are going to be families that have to drop their students off before 7:15. We also have buses that arrive at times before 7:15. And so we would make the gym available in a large space where the expectation would be that students are in that space socially distanced, six feet apart.
And John, last question for you, and I know you've already touched base on it a little bit, but any sanctioned outdoor learning?
Yeah, we are strongly encouraging that our teachers look to teach outside as much as possible. And so I can see on a regular basis, our teachers utilizing our outdoor space. For those of you that have been on campus, you know we have a very large campus. We've got plenty of green space that's out front of the building, we've got practice fields along the side of the building, we've got a football field, tennis courts behind the building. Our PE classes will be out there on a daily basis. Our other teachers are being asked to find ways to go out and do those things. And so we're encouraging teachers to look at alternative methods for delivering information so that they can do that in an outdoor environment. We're looking at alternative strategies such as, you know, having a device with you while you're outside, our internet connectivity works out there, having a tablet with you that might be able to jot notes and do other things. Find ways to be creative so that we can utilize those outdoor spaces. And by doing that, we then give the teacher and the student an opportunity to social distance at a greater space, enjoy the fresh air, and take the mask off for a little while.
Principal Young, thank you for all your answers today. Greatly appreciated all the hard work and efforts you put in.
Thank you, and feel free, any questions you might have, feel free to reach out, happy to answer.
So next up, next up, we have Mrs. Palmeroy, high school math and science teacher. I'm not sure the makeup of your classes this year, but I know you've taught both subjects, and we appreciate you coming on board and addressing some of these questions for us. First one for you, Ms. Palmeroy. Would the online learning match what students are doing in school for that day? Does the work come from the teacher? Want to touch on those two questions maybe for us?
Yeah, absolutely. So the truth is that as teachers, we are going to be doing everything different this year compared to the way we've done things in the past. So if you think about the experience that your children have had in school up until now, and the experience that you had as a student, and the experience your parents had as a student, you'll notice that there are some real commonalities, there are some traditions that tend to persist in the way we teach students. And so this year, a lot of those are changing dramatically. And so, one of the things that we felt the need to do as a district was offer this combination option where each teacher is going to have a mixed caseload. Some of their students are going to be online, some are going to be face-to-face, some are going to be moving from one to the other as situations arise and change, if they get sick or if they are exposed to COVID-19. And so, as teachers are figuring out how to manage that mixed caseload, they are going to be providing the same work to their online students as their face-to-face students. And that work is going to look a little bit different because there are restrictions that are placed on us in terms of how students are moving, what supplies they have access to, what's really going to keep them healthy and safe. So learning is certainly going to look a lot different this year, but the goal is to keep the experience of an online student as close to that of a face-to-face student as possible.
Another question along those same lines, and again, we see parents really with the hybrid, the online, doing a lot of comparisons. So can you provide information on the virtual instruction and what that would entail in terms of live online instruction slash learning versus online instruction that versus online instruction that is pre-recorded or modules that can be done on their own time?
Sure, so at MSHS, we're going to be using Michigan Virtual as the basis for many of our courses. And in that case, those are structured as pre-recorded modules that are designed to be done asynchronously as a student has time and independently. However, as teachers, we acknowledge that peer-to-peer interaction and student-to-teacher interaction is really valuable. So I would anticipate that teachers would want to incorporate at least some of that into their classes. I certainly can't say how much, what the proportion will be. It'll definitely be different in different classes. In some classes, it's a very natural fit to incorporate some of those online interactions in a virtual space. In other classes, it makes more sense to keep things a bit more independent and asynchronous. Teachers are going to be figuring this out kind of as they go. That's the reality that we're in. We did not have the luxury of planning for this pandemic or, you know, getting ourselves perfectly ready for every possible scenario. We're going to be problem-solving and troubleshooting as the days go on. So the answer to all of these questions may change through the year.
A parent asked that their child is going to be taking AP Chemistry and that requires a lab. How are labs being addressed?
So Mr. Young pointed out that all of our AP or Advanced Placement courses are prescribed by a corporation called College Board. So they tell us, in order to offer this class and administer the exam, these are the requirements you have to meet. In science, that means that there are several required labs. Students have been taking these classes through Michigan Virtual for years. And so Michigan Virtual does have labs that check the box, they meet the requirement. Those labs are computerized, virtual, simulated labs. And again, as educators, we know that that's suboptimal. Our students learn best when they have hands-on experiences. So using Michigan Virtual as the base, teachers are going to be doing these simulated labs. And in my personal science classes, I'm going to be looking for ways to augment those with household materials or maybe video simulations or some way to make that a bit, a bit more than what is offered on Michigan Virtual. And again, we'll just have to be creative and solve problems as they come up.
Very good. This parent's concern is if we were to be shut down again and everything moved to online, online mandatory, what would the plan for students who parents are both essential workers look like? And maybe without getting into parents being essential workers per se, what is it, what's the difference? What does it look like when we're face-to-face and doing online? And what's it look like maybe when we're 100% online?
Sure, so beginning in the late spring, each level of our district, K-5, 6, 8, and 9, 12, had committees that were working on that problem exactly. What would we do in the situation where some families wanted to be online? What would we do in the situation where all of our students are online? And so we do have a plan for if that were to occur. And basically, what it means is that teachers will be pouring all of their energy into creating those online experiences and connecting with students virtually. This is a very tough problem that is going to require some creative community solutions. I know that many teachers are parents as well. If this happens in my family, I'm going to be doing my work very early in the morning, helping my children in the afternoon and in the evening and weekends also. So there's going to have to be some creative solutions that arise. And I'm sure that we can figure it out. I've lived in Marquette long enough to know that there are a lot of creative problem solvers here.
Next question, the parent wants to know, are they able to change their choice during the first semester if they notice their child struggling? Whether it's in-person, online, or a combination of the two? Or do we need to stick with what we have chosen for the full first semester?
Well, our students and their learning are our number-one priority. That is our only goal, is to help them learn in the best possible way. So there is no unilateral answer, yes, you can change at any time, or no, you absolutely can't change. We're going to have to solve problems as they arise. And the truth is that toggling to a completely different delivery format may not be the way to address struggles of a student learning. It might be that a more directed intervention or some change in routine would be more effective. And we would have to work together to figure that out. We also have to keep in mind that there are outside parameters that dictate our choices. It depends on what phase we're in in the governor's plan. It depends on what tier we're in in the district's plan that kind of determine what options are available. We will certainly do what we can to help a struggling student, just like we have always done.
Another question, will their online student interact with only teachers or teachers and fellow students?
Well, again, we know that that's a key educational strategy. When students are communicating with each other and communicating with their teacher, that is really something that's beneficial. The Michigan Virtual courses that we're going to be using are meant to be asynchronous and independent. I would anticipate that at least some teachers will incorporate at least some of that peer interaction. But I'll just repeat that we don't know the details. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like until we get into the muck of it and really see what we're dealing with.
Last question, mandatory hand washing. What does hand washing look like at the high school throughout the day?
So our district's plan absolutely includes mandatory scheduled hand washing every two to three hours. Students are also going to be sanitizing their desks every hour. And I think it's important, as families are making their choice, to realize that this is not business-as-usual. Selecting face-to-face education does not mean that you are sending your kid back to an environment that's very similar to one they've experienced before. Things are going to look different. We have to do things differently to keep kids healthy and safe. So I'd like you to envision what that would look like from a student's perspective, to be dropped off at 7:15, pack up their backpack, go straight to class, sit in an assigned seat without moving the entire hour, walk in a predetermined path to your next class. Same story, you're sitting in your seat. I think that if there are students who are thinking this is the way they're going to go, then their families are going to need to support the fact that this is going to look different, feel different, and be uncomfortable at times. If I were sending my students back face-to-face, I already scheduled time for physical activity. I already scheduled time for homework. And I would think about scheduling some time for them to connect with friends because they won't be doing that as much in school. I would schedule time for them to lay on the couch and decompress because they will be very structured and very rigid during their school day. That said, we are going to continue to maintain our focus on making those connections and helping your kids feel safe and educating them well. We are going to emphasize empathy over everything. We have so much empathy for your kids as they are going through this global health crisis that's defining their youth in a way that none of us would have chosen for them. And I'm asking every member of the community to please allow your children to see you exercising empathy. Rather than complaining about other people's politics or disagreeing with a decision that you don't feel was right, let them see you being part of the solution and working toward helping solve problems that you seek. We're here for you guys.
Mrs. Palmeroy, excellent job. Thank you for all your hard work and your efforts. We greatly appreciate it. Next, we have Dr. Travis Smith. He is the principal at Cherry Creek Elementary School. Travis, thanks for being a part of this panel.
You're welcome.
A lot of the questions I'm going to ask are very similar to questions that I asked Mr. Young, and you're going to, you know, hopefully provide us answers from that K-5 perspective. First question I'll start with is, is the online learning at the elementary level? Parents are curious, is that going to be synchronous or asynchronous? And will students have a chance to be a part of classroom discussions with teachers and other students?
Good question. At the K-5 level, may you be an in-person student or 100% online or in a, utilized in a hybrid format. You are a math student, and so as a student of Marquette area public schools, you will be taught by grade-level teacher within that K-5 format. And you are as much of a student, if you're 100% online, as part of that classroom as you are if you are 100% in-person as well. The opportunities for online students to take part in synchronous live learning could be limited, but there will be opportunities to participate in virtual discussions that would happen through Seesaw or Google Classroom. And our teachers will be employing some of the best practices, make sure that your students are involved in the daily activities. And something that, that families that choose the online academy, they should also recognize that the school day will look different than a traditional in-person format, but it also gives you a greater degree of flexibility as well.
Will students be getting time to spend outside, no matter the weather, to take off masks and get fresh air?
So like Mr. Young said, from the high school perspective, at the elementary level, we will be building in time for students to have mask breaks. And that might be found during a snack time where they are able to go outside. Also, we will have our normal scheduled recess times throughout the day. That'll be an opportunity for students to have those natural mask breaks as well.
Speaking for K-5, what grades can do online?
The online option and hybrid option, of course, the in-person format as well is open to all students in kindergarten or junior kindergarten, kindergarten and through 5th grade as well. So parents, you'll find that something that will be common in the elementary schools is we will be using a similar classroom messaging format. So in the elementary schools, we'll be using classrooms. And then our, our virtual classrooms, that will be utilized by our in-person students, hybrid and online students, will be followed through Seesaw or Google Classroom as well. So that will be something common across the four elementary schools.
Can the classes be done at any time during the day? And I think they're speaking probably of their online classes.
Yes, as I mentioned before, there's a greater degree of flexibility in that, in that online scenario. There may be times where the classroom teacher will work with your online learner during the, the school day. And they will have to schedule those, those opportunities ahead of time, excuse me, those opportunities ahead of time. But again, flexibility is, is part of the hallmark of the online offering.
Will there be any before-school meetings for parents?
Well, just last night at Cherry Creek Elementary School, we had our, our annual August meeting. And I know that my principal colleagues are going to be holding their meetings very soon, or they already have in some cases. And, you know, on that note, I would like to thank our parent groups, even though they recognize we are in this unique situation and their efforts will look different. They are very forthright about their willingness to, to help us out in any capacity during this time. And so we had a very productive meeting last night. And I know all the elementary principals have been sending out correspondence through their Skyward messaging systems, keeping parents abreast of what's happening. And as Mr. Young said earlier, we are all open to those email queries that, that you're sending us, and we will respond to those as quickly as possible. And lastly, we'll also be scheduling a virtual open house in lieu of our, our in-person format. And you can expect teachers in grade levels to produce information that focuses on their classroom and what it will look like in their environment. And then the principals will be providing an, an open house experience from that building-wide perspective as well.
Can you maybe take a moment and describe what the hybrid options maybe look like at the elementary schedule? Are students able to come in and participate in specials, things like that, if they're certainly an online learner, or maybe come in for their core classes? And potentially maybe participate in any extracurriculars that we might have at the elementary level?
Absolutely. Kindergarten through 12th grade, like Mr. Young said regarding the high school, students will have opportunities to take any number of, of classes. So they can take core classes or their specials classes or any combination thereof and, and at any point during the day as well. One thing that's really important, though, from the elementary standpoint, is that we are asking parents that if you choose the hybrid format, that you work with your building principal and your classroom teacher to schedule what the days and the weeks look like for your student. So then we can best help the classroom teacher and your student be successful as they move back and forth from the virtual and the in-person format. Now, as I've said before, in that hybrid option, we do not expect your student to sit in front of their device from 9:00 AM until 3:45. We do expect there to be assignments that are pushed out or lessons that are pre-recorded from teachers and pushed out to, to your students. They can access those at any time. We do expect there to be communication between your student and the teacher that would be happening during the regular school day as well. So the hybrid option or the online portion of that may look different than the in-person format, but there will be just as many opportunities for your students to learn virtually as they would in-person.
So at the elementary level, how do parents go about setting up online classes for their student?
So you want to make sure that you answer Mr. Saunders' survey by Wednesday at 5:00 PM. And then we'll take that data to then build the cohorts that are found across the grade levels, across the four elementary buildings. And as the building principal, it's my responsibility to develop the schedule that will be happening in the building. And then we will be working, as I mentioned before, with me and your classroom teacher and you as a family to develop that, that schedule that will be specific to your students.
How are you guys going to tackle the lunch issue at the elementary level?
Lunch and breakfast will be served in the classroom, so students will not be going down to the cafeteria anymore. And a question that I've been receiving lately is in regards to allergies. And that's certainly an issue that many of our students and their families are working through. And in regards to allergies, we are going to treat those scenarios like we have in the past. So we will send home letters to parents if there is a certain allergen that a student has that is present in the classroom. And so we would not have those types of foods brought into the classroom for snack or even for lunch. So that classroom would effectively be allergy-free.
Will students who choose online school get physical books for studying subjects, or is it purely electronic?
So parents can expect a little bit of both. Our resources found in our curriculum are found online and in PDF format. So that's something that, that you would be able to access. But also, we will be able to get your students their, their workbooks and their other physical materials that would help accompany those lessons as well.
Can you help describe for us what the beginning of the school day will look like as students arrive? Normally, they would maybe at an elementary level, congregate in the gym or in the hallways. But that seems to have some social distancing issues. So how are you guys going to tackle that, that morning arrival at your level?
So speaking for, for elementary buildings, I can say that historically, our arrival and dismissal procedures have looked a little bit different, given the layout of the building or the neighborhood in which the school is located. And I can say that this year, they will look different yet again because we will do our best to adhere to social distancing when possible. We know that we cannot guarantee that necessarily, but we will try to put in those protocols to keep students safe. So with that, parents, we are going to need your help in the arrival and dismissal process. We're going to need a lot of patience as we do anticipate to have an increase in traffic in our parking lots or in our tight neighborhoods. And you can expect to have a staggered drop-off schedule. If you are a family whose last name begins with A through K or L through Z, you may find very specific times to drop off your students in the morning. And students will stage outside and they will go to certain entrances. And students will stage outside and they will go to certain entrances within the building during the arrival time. And same with exiting the building. We will have the students trying to be socially distanced and trying to guarantee their safety during that time as well.
Any sanctioned outdoor learning at the elementary level?
So that is, again, like Mr. Young had shared, and I assume Mr. Regul as well, that's going to be something that in education, we love those opportunities to get outside. And at the elementary buildings, you will find that as well. So just today, I was speaking with my building leadership team, and we were looking for funny, creative ways to utilize our green space and our woods and our playgrounds to help facilitate those lessons. And this is perhaps one of the silver linings that is found in this very unique time as it does force us out of the building when we can and have our students learn outdoors and use their hands much more than you may have found in years past.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We appreciate all your efforts, all the hard work you're putting into making all these learning options possible for our students at not only Cherry Creek, but all of MAPS as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up, it's my pleasure to welcome Mrs. Longton, fifth-grade teacher, Superior Hells. You had both my students. So you know I think highly of you and all the work you do. And thank you for joining the panel today to answer a few questions for us. First question from a parent has, well, three or four questions within the question. But I'd like to know more about the combination option, or we're calling it a hybrid, but combination option for the school year. My son is going into first grade. What two days would he attend school?
And so I think this was addressed, that this will definitely have to be worked out with the principals and the teacher and the families because we know with an elementary school, just like the other buildings, the classrooms have different schedules for their days. And when they teach math, maybe different. It won't be the same for a kindergarten teacher to a fourth-grade teacher to a fifth-grade teacher. So that will definitely have to be worked out with the principal and teacher for their schedule.
Probably also important to note that it's not a set two days. That was an example put out there, whether the parent maybe feels more comfortable one day a week or four days a week. We haven't put a set number of days that a parent could work out with their building principal, their teacher of how they attend in a hybrid option. I'll go on with a few other questions in that same relation. Would the online learning match what they're doing in school for that day? And would the work come from their teacher?
Definitely the same standards will be taught online as they would be face-to-face or in the hybrid approach. We're going to be treating our face-to-face students as online students as much as we can. It looks different in kindergarten compared to fifth grade. What I, as a fifth-grade teacher, can do online is far more than a kindergarten teacher can do. So, but we're hoping to make transitions from online and face-to-face seamless in that way. So it will look different in each grade level, especially in K five or pre-K five.
I know Mr. Smith addressed this just a few minutes ago, but I'll throw it back out to you in case you have anything else to add. Are elementary students going to have recess? And are they going to eat lunch in the lunchroom?
So the students will be eating lunch in our classrooms. But again, we're talking about those outdoor spaces. The teachers are all thinking very creatively, and we want those kids outside as much as possible. So that might be something that they're all thinking about, like having kids wearing sunscreen coming to school, maybe bringing a beach towel where you're sitting outside to enjoy your lunch instead of playing.
This parent's wondering if we can provide more information on what the virtual instruction would entail in terms of live online instruction slash learning versus online instruction that is pre-recorded or modules that can be done on one's own time in non-online coursework?
So because we know each family's situation is different and their ability, if you're online, you may have many students online at the same time. And so you're probably going to lean more, especially in the elementary, on the pre-recorded lessons so that you can access it at any time. And we're going to be using MobiMax this year as part of our online platform. And then each teacher will have the autonomy to go beyond that and add the materials that an elementary experience would normally provide. So speaking to my colleagues in the elementary school, they're trying right now to see how much we can digitize to make it equal for the online and the in-face instruction to be similar so that they can still enjoy some of the things that we've always done with our kids who are in-face.
It'd be a tough one to answer, but I'll let you take a shot at it. How many hours would a student be in front of a computer? This one specifically, how many hours would their second grader spend on screen? I know you teach fifth, but maybe take a shot at how many hours you think a student might be on screen if they're at home?
I'm currently on the online virtual academy for the elementary too. And we are working out what that may look like. We don't exactly have that exact answer for grade level. But it will be different for kindergartners through fifth grade. We know kindergartners' ability to attend online would be much shorter than even a fifth grader could. So that will look very different. Each student takes a different amount of time to complete a task. So that is the nice part about being able to do it when you want to do it in the time that works best for you if you are online. You can take as much time as you need to get those things done. So it will vary greatly, but we obviously know the research on student screen time and what's best for kids. And again, Rachel spoke about it, that this year will look very different and what is expected will look very different for our students.
Question we had earlier that Mrs. Pomeroy was able to address from the high school standpoint. I'll give you an opportunity from the elementary standpoint. What does online learning look like if we go back into a mandatory or a shutdown and it's mandatory that we're 100% online? What is that going to look like perhaps for our K five elementary students?
So when the teachers are going to be asked to be teaching in-face and online at the same time, like I mentioned, we'll be relying far more on our recorded lessons. If we go to a complete online platform where all of us are online, you will, obviously, the teachers will be available during those school hours for more synchronous interaction or opportunities for students to reach out to a teacher for questions and help on assignments.
Will our online students interact with only teachers or teachers and fellow students?
So online students will be in the same Seesaw or Google Classroom as the other students who are assigned to me. And so they will be able to digitally interact in our classrooms in that way and share their work together. One thing I did in the spring was have shared slides. And everybody put there, each had a slide where they were putting their work on there so that they could share together. Or even if you're doing a digital assignment, I could assign someone who is online with somebody who is in-face to work on the project. So there could be. It is definitely something like Rachel again alluded to, this is new times, and we're going to be learning as we go. We're fortunate that we live in a great community with great teachers who we have Northern to lean on and help us figure out these things as we go through. And we continue to offer a great education and way it goes.
Will students bring snacks from home and is lunch from home still allowed?
Yeah, so the snacks and lunch you can bring. And just like Travis had mentioned, that if there are allergies, it'll be just like it had been done before, that you'll get a list of which allergies a student might have in the classroom, and those will not be allowed into the classroom.
Will there be mandatory hand washing throughout the day?
Yeah, so we're currently coming up for plans for our buildings on what this will look like and when and how things like arrival, when the kids come in, we will have them wash their hands. When they leave, we will have them wash their hands. They will be sitting at their desk for their instruction. It will look much different than it ever has in the past. We are used to, we know what is best practice for kids to work in groups, close together, at tables, talking, interacting, and that's different this year. So we will be doing our best to provide a safe space for your kids where they are at their desk. And we'll be offering those times for them to make sure that they feel comfortable. And those products, the hand sanitizer and things, will be available for them to use in our classrooms.
And maybe one more follow-up question is to put you on the spot a little bit, Mrs. Longton. The state has made us disable the bubblers on drinking fountains. So what does it look like then for an elementary student maybe going into this year without being able to use the bubblers, access drinking water, those types of things?
Yeah, so we talked about that already. Obviously, that'd be like on the new school supply list that you should be bringing your water bottle to school filled with fresh water. I'm assuming they'll be able to go use the water bottle fillers to fill them up during the day. And so we'll make time for that to make sure.
Awesome. We really appreciate your efforts and all you're doing to ensure that MAPS has a successful kickoff to the 2021 school year. Thank you for all your efforts. I'd like to welcome our Director of Special Education, Mrs. Sandra Barnes. Thanks for joining us, Sandra, being a part of the panel. Couple of questions for you related to our special ed students. Can kids wear face shields instead of masks?
Right now, face shields do not comply with the governor's executive orders for the Safe School Roadmap or MAPS reopening plan. It's not really a clear mask or a clear face covering. The district will have clear masks available for students and our teachers to use when necessary or as indicated by students' needs or language requirements. For some students, face shields may be medically indicated, and the district will make those available when necessary.
There's been talk about younger students, K one, not wearing masks all day. Is this happening?
Unfortunately, no. All students K through 12 are required to wear face masks. Students are required to wear masks in classes, on buses, and when moving through the buildings. They will not have to wear them while they're eating. And there will be ample opportunities per breaks outside, as both principals already mentioned, where masks won't need to be worn. Teachers will also be working with students to address how to wear masks properly. Our reopening plan does not, however, require face masks for the early childhood special education students. Right now, they won't have to wear them in the classrooms. They will still probably wear them as they're working during transportation and as they're moving through the buildings. The classroom requirement for the early childhood special children is subject to change based on the level of possible infection in buildings and what the teachers needs.
This parent asks, with their student being in special education for reading and math, will he only have the special education teacher? Or will he have to work with the fourth-grade teacher and the special education teacher?
That will depend on the level of services written into the student's IEP. If the IEP indicates special education, reading, and math, then that's what will be provided. The special education team will likely still be providing pull-out direct instruction in both of these areas. If this particular instruction's not written into the student's IEP, then the IEP accommodations will be provided by the general education teacher working with the special education teacher. For social studies, science, and specials and electives, the general education teachers will be the teachers with accommodations and modifications as specified by the IEP. And this would happen whether the student is face-to-face, virtual, or hybrid.
And last question, if you could just maybe touch on services that we're going to be offering special ed students who elect to be 100% online or possibly hybrid. How does that maybe look for a student? Again, all online or maybe only comes two, three days a week?
We're discussing that right now. A hybrid student that's only coming a couple of days a week or a couple of hours a day, we recognize that you're asking for your student to come to school to be in particular classes or for a particular reason. However, we would hope that during the time the student is in school, we'd be able to provide those ancillary services such as speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, or any other ancillary services they might need while the student's in the school without hopefully having them lose too much time in the classes you've elected them to come to school for. For totally online students, that'll depend on the student's level of need. If the IEP and the student's level of need is adjusted or is such that we can deliver those therapies through an online telehealth kind of option, then we will do that. If the student's level of need is such that the therapist feels they need to see that student directly, we would ask that you bring those students into a building. We would have a safe, hygienic, clean room, and they would meet with the therapist just on one-on-one. If your student has multiple therapies, we would hope to schedule them all at the same time when you're bringing your student into the buildings.
Mrs. Barnes, thank you for all your efforts making this happen and start of the 2021 school year. Everything you're doing is greatly appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, I'd like to welcome Mr. Rico, our Bothwell Middle School principal. Welcome, Mr. Rico. Thanks for joining us on the panel today.
All right. Thank you for having me.
Questions very similar to Mr. Young's, Mr. Smith's from the middle school perspective. First one, online academy courses, are they going to be asynchronous or synchronous?
Similar to the high school, our courses are going to be primarily asynchronous. I think there's going to be opportunities for some synchronous learning. However, that could be very limited. Some of that could be some live streaming within the classroom. And again, this is going to be strictly up to the teacher and what their comfort levels are. So some of that and some other opportunities for synchronous learning could be a live Google Doc where a student who is online has some discussion questions available to answer. And his answers or their answers could be up on the board while the class can see those answers during that time.
And their follow-up to that was, is there going to be a chance for online students to take part in classroom discussions with the teachers and other students?
Again, that's going to depend on the lesson and the actual teacher and what they're, you know, what's going on within the classroom. I think it's important that we try to involve those online students as much as we can because we want to build those personal connections while they're online. And, you know, they want to be able to discuss with their peers. I know that we could do things such as, with those questions that are being provided in the face-to-face arena, students online could still answer those same questions and, you know, share their answers within the classroom.
How about mask breaks? Will students be getting mask breaks regardless of the weather at Bothwell? Get a chance to get outside and get some fresh air?
Yeah, we've, you know, the teachers at Bothwell, they work in teams. So we'll have teams of four. We're looking at providing a team of four within the sixth-grade level as well. And so they're going to, they were tasked to develop a break schedule every two to three hours. As you know, at Bothwell, we have canopies. And so even with the weather, we're able to still get outside and at least go under the canopies as long as the teams are socially distancing with themselves. But yes, we're strongly encouraging mask breaks throughout the day.
What grades can do online learning?
Students in grades six through eight are able to do online learning. We'll be utilizing Google Classroom and MobiMax. I know that the teachers at Bothwell are really excited or seem to be very excited about utilizing Google Classroom as their primary platform. But they do have the option to use MobiMax. MobiMax will allow them to connect with their Google Classroom and even use preloaded modules for them to be able to teach with their students. So those will be the, the two platforms we'll be utilizing here at Bothwell. So those will be the, the two platforms we'll be utilizing here at Bothwell.
Can the classes, and they're referring to online classes, can the classes be done at any time during the day?
Like the elementary and high school levels, the online courses are going to be asynchronous and that'll be allow the student flexibility to be self-paced. However, if, if I were, I would, I would highly recommend that the parents develop a routine with their child so that they, that way they're, you know, maybe getting up in the morning and following their schedule so that they, that way they stay on task because with the platform we're using, they're going to want to be able to follow along with the lessons. So they, they don't want to, students are not going to want to get behind a couple days because then they're going to be catching up and, and that, that's just setting them up for failure. So developing a routine for the student, I think, would be key. And so, yeah, I, I think, I think it'll be good for those kids to wake up early and follow a normal day as possible.
Will there be any meetings for parents before school starts?
Right now, we're planning on having a Zoom meeting with Bothwell parents. I know that the high school had one yesterday and that seemed to go very well. And so we're looking at doing something very similar and we'll certainly be sending out information sometime soon. I know we're also going to be doing a virtual tour, similar to what the elementary is likely going to be doing that Dr. Smith mentioned, we'll be doing a virtual tour. That'll take place of our sixth grade orientation, our family night because obviously we can't have large groups and so we'll be doing that. I've also asked the teachers to create within their team introduction videos. So they'll send those out to all their students. I know that the, the students are eager to meet their teachers and so I think that'll be, you know, one way to start to connect with their teacher before the school year starts.
This question's coming from a parent with, I think they're looking at pretty much 100% online type learner. Can they participate in extracurricular activities at Bothwell if they're 100% of an online learner? And if the student chooses online, could they potentially come in and participate in specials like orchestra or band?
Absolutely. They'll have access to and available to all our programs that we offer. We have, we have quite a few clubs that we offer, but again, with the times and given the circumstances, a lot of that, we're not going to be allowed to do after-school programs in a sense of we're going to meet in a certain room, but we'll certainly allow for, you know, we have the bike club, they could go still participate in our bike club and, you know, we, you know, we talked about the orchestra and band. We have students, that would be possibly be part of their hybrid option. So if they decide they want to do a hybrid option, they could certainly come to orchestra and band. We have that going already, so we welcome that and we encourage that.
How would an online learner go about setting up classes? Do they meet with their guidance counselor? What's, what's the protocol to, to, to get registered for online learning?
Definitely than what's been done in the, in the past at Bothwell, we actually allow the students to do, to select their electives. So that's, that's generally what we do. But this year, they were able to select their electives on, through Skybird. I, I closed that up and so right now, if they wanted to select, if they did not select an elective just yet, they could reach out to me and tell me what electives they would like to choose. Certainly go on our, on our Bothwell, Bothwell page and you can look at our resources and our resources, you know, within that resource, there's a PDF document that'll give you our course offerings. I would go on there and you can select up to four classes and then we'll, we'll try our best to put you in, in those, in, and if you can reach out to me, you can reach out to Mrs. Anderson, who's our assistant principal, and then you can also reach out to the counselors.
Will, talk to us about how lunches are going to be served at Bothwell. How are you guys going to handle the, the lunchtime issue?
So given the circumstance, we had to try to utilize as much space as we possibly can. Typically, we have, well, we have three lunches, sixth, seventh and eighth grade lunch. And typically, we have about 200, say 230 students in a, in a cafeteria. We won't be able to do that anymore. So what we'll be doing, we'll be splitting up that cafeteria and we'll be utilizing both our sports deck. So we'll be, we have currently, I just, you know, worked with custodians to help them place 34 more round tables up in one of the sports decks and then we'll be utilizing some of our, our long eight-foot tables. And so that's how we'll be socially distancing. And like some of the other schools, depends on, you know, how many students we get and hopefully our survey will allow us to see, but we may even open up the outdoors and if we have to, we'll open up the bleachers as long as we're allowed to, you know, we just want to make sure everybody's socially distanced.
What will the hybrid option look like at the middle school level?
The hybrid option is certainly an interesting one for families, especially at the, probably K eight level. It allows you, families to personalize the, the schedules. Different than, than the high school, the, the high school has students who have, who are able to come and go with their license. At this, at the K eight level, especially, you know, even the middle school, we talk about, you got to get picked up. So math will transfer students before and after school. So within that timeframe, if you choose to do an option on online or a hybrid option, say at the seventh grade level, the, the schedule is, we don't block our electives, so it's going to be pretty difficult, but certainly you could come two days a week or three days a week, whatever you choose, and you could do online the other, the other option. So if you come two days a week, you do three days online. If you come three days a week, face to face, you do two days online. And so those are certainly, it's a, it's a, it, there's just so many different options for you to choose to personalize and, you know, whatever you're comfortable with. So just certainly reach out to us and we can, we can discuss that and try to make a determination of what's best for you.
Will students who choose online school get physical books for studying subjects or is it purely electronic?
Like the high school and the elementary schools, it'll be a mixture of both. Not all of our subjects provide textbooks, but I know that we're utilizing different electronic textbooks. But if we provide a physical textbook, that particular student who is choosing to go online or even hybrid will have a, a physical textbook as well as a Chromebook. So whatever that class provides, that student will certainly receive.
Talk to us about the, the start of the day. What's it going to look like for kids entering the building, trying to avoid any major congregations of students? How are you going to set that up to, to begin this school year?
This is certainly something that we're still working on because at Bothwell, it's just a tight, it's a tight parking lot and we have a lot of students that are under, under the canopies during, you know, before and after school. And so one of the things I'm considering doing is asking parents to come between 7:45 and 7:55. Now, given the, the long lines of cars, them, that may be fairly difficult. However, we have quite a, a large schoolyard, so we'll be able to utilize that if we need be and if necessary, we can open up the gym and allow students to socially distance in the gym.
Any sanctioned outdoor learning happening at Bothwell?
Again, similar to the, you know, the other schools within the district, we're certainly encouraging outdoor learning. We're developing a schedule for outdoor areas for teachers to be able to sign up their stu, their classes so they can go outside and still socially distance away from other classes. And during that time, they'll even be able to provide some mask breaks and for the students. And so, yeah, we're, we're pretty excited about that opportunity and know that we're, we're looking at, we're developing a rain garden in our front lawn, so you'll notice that's something different this year. And so that's actually going to be considered an outdoor classroom and so students will be able to utilize that. And so, yeah, we're, we're pretty excited about that idea as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rico. Appreciate all the hard work, all the efforts that you've put in to, to get us off to a successful start to the 2021 school year. Appreciate your efforts.
All right, thank you.
In conclusion, at first, once again, I guess I should say, I'd like to apologize to everyone that tried to tune in and see this live with our technical difficulties. That just wasn't happening. So we all participated, we were able to, to put this out as a recording and we'll get this to all our social media platforms as soon as we possibly can. I would like to remind parents that the information that we've already shared, FAQs and FAQ today, Mrs. Berry took a transcript of all the answers that were shared with you today. That will be posted to www.mapsnet.org. We have kind of a COVID page going with, with all the, the information that we've been sharing, our district preparedness plan, correspondence emails, those things that I've sent out to parents and of course, the FAQs and, and those types of things. So that will be posted on there by first thing tomorrow morning. Lastly, I would like to, because we weren't able to do this live and, and not sure when we'll be able to get this on those social media platforms, I'd like to extend the deadline for parents to make their educational selection. I'd like to put, push that out one more day. So we'll make the deadline Thursday, August 20th for that deadline to try to make that educational selection. I just want folks to understand that it's really important for us from a planning standpoint is the principals start to collect that information and go back and build cohorts. When we see that, that maybe we have 10 kids out of this class that are online or 15 students out of this class that are online, that they can reset those schedules, try to balance those schedules so we can try to have as much social distancing in those classrooms as possible. That's really why that information is so important for us. All these principals set up schedules before they left for the summer and now they're going to have to go back and redo a lot of those schedules. So they're going to put in a lot of time and effort and we really need that information in order to move forward. The other thing that we need parents to do, and again, I will extend this one more day as well, so it, it stays with the, the education selection, and that's to fill out the Google form for your transportation selection. I've noticed a lot of parents have been putting their transportation requests in. If at all possible, I'll, I'll once again encourage parents to self-transport if they can. If not, we'll still be providing transportation for, for MAPS students, but any help in that helps create social distancing for us on our buses. Last point, our plans, as, as you heard today from, from this great panel, are still fluid and flexible. Dealing with this pandemic, I know it was difficult on all the families at home. It's created certainly an extra layer of, of stress, anxiety for our staff. We want to keep our staff as, as safe and healthy as possible. We'll be having to, to make some decisions as we move forward to continue to ensure that not only our staff, but our students remain safe and healthy. And so we want people to understand and realize that we are going to be fluid and flexible and, and that we will be making some additional decisions, probably on the fly as we see what really works and, and what isn't working for us. So once again, please check the MAPS net website for, for any other information. I'd like to thank Mr. Hammerstrom for all his efforts in, in taping this for us, our school board meetings and certainly this town hall. And I want to encourage parents that continue to have questions, feel free to not only reach out to myself, but at this point, certainly the building principals with, with additional building level concerns, questions that they might have. Thank you once again for, for watching this. We, we appreciate all your patience and for supporting the market area public schools. Thank you.